Get everyone's attention. So I'll call the meeting to order as people quiet down. And welcome, everyone, and roll call. I believe Heidi Kendall, Trustee Kendall, had another obligation. And Trustee McDonald was indicating she was going to be here, so she must be running late. And I think those are the only two that are missing at this point. So do you have that, Lenora? Okay. So now we move on to the pledge of allegiance. So if we can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we move on to agenda item number three, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. I do have one request of the trustees for, under approval of minutes four B. I'd like to table that until next meeting, and I'll explain why when we're addressing minutes at the time, but that would be my only request. Is that okay with everybody? Seeing nods around the table, then are there any other requests to revise the agenda, or is it approved as it stands? Seeing no requests and nods, then we'll follow the agenda as it has been set. So now we move on to four, which is approving minutes. Just a little bit of background, as we know, because Mrs. Jacobs is now working in the superintendent's office, she has also become the secretary to the board. And so she and I haven't had a big opportunity to go through minutes because I've been ill and then I was traveling. And so we're going to be working on the second set of minutes to see if we can reduce the length of the minutes a little bit because they're pretty long, and I think there's a way to reduce it. So that's why I was making the request to table the second minutes. The same might be said about the first minutes, but because they have to be approved within 40 days of the meeting, we'll go ahead and go forward on the minutes from the regular meeting on November 14th. I will note that when I read through them after the agenda had gone out, there are some typos in there and some names that need to be corrected. So if it's okay with the trustees, I will just send, rather than spend the time tonight going through very minor non-substantive changes, if it's okay with you, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended minutes with my corrections sent to Lenora so we can get them approved tonight. So moved by Trustee Dugger. And seconded by Trustee Lorenzen.
I have a question.
Oh, question, okay.
Are we gonna have 40 days on these 28 minutes because our meeting is not till like 10:00?
Well, we, actually, then we can do this, I mean, let me throw this out in order to get both sets of minutes approved tonight, but first we'll do the regular board meeting minutes of November 14th, since we do have a seconded motion, and then we'll address the next ones. So is there any other board comment, or any, if anyone else noted, standing corrections, send them to me and I'll incorporate them into my corrections. Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of approving the amended minutes from the regular board meeting on November 14th, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all present. And so in light of what Trustee Lorenzen just pointed out, we can do the same thing with the minutes for November 28th. I also did go through them and check them up for typos, and there's a couple of names that just need to be corrected and things like that. But I, the other suggestion I was just talking about with Lenora is to take out the background information and the recommendations section, since we see that once already in our agenda. If we just remove that, it will make the minutes a little bit more minute-like instead of incorporating both agenda and minutes into the minutes. So that's the only other correction I wanted to make to those. If that amendment plus the corrections to the names and things are okay, then I entertain a motion to correct those minutes as well, or to adopt those minutes as well, approve those minutes. Moved by Trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Smith. And if anyone else has any minor corrections that you caught, please send them to me and I'll work with Lenora to get them corrected. And with the seconded motion, I bet that's Trustee McDonald. All those in favor of approving the amended regular meeting minutes of November 28th, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's all trustees present except Trustee McDonald, who's just joined us. And now we move on to public comment on non-agenda items. As you know or have heard me explain in the past, this is the time when if there's anything that you want to bring to the attention of the school board or the district, now is a time to bring it to our attention through the mechanism of public comment. Because it's on non-agenda items and it hasn't been noticed up to the public, the trustees won't be talking about it to comply with the Open Meetings Act, but if it's something that needs additional conversation, we can add it to a future agenda. Otherwise, we just like to hear from the public on any, anything you want to let us know what's going on. So if you can state your first name and last name, and if you have an unusual spelling of your name, and if you represent an organization, please identify that, and then try to keep the comments around three or four minutes. And so is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Just come on up to the podium, and there's actually a button to press, a red light will come on, and then if you just state your first and last name and spell it for Mrs. Jacobs if it's an unusual spelling.
I'm Lance Nichols, and I'm representing the Missoula Robotics Team. I go to Sentinel. And I would just like to thank the board and the taxpayers for paying our registration fee every year. It's been very helpful in our fundraising efforts.
Name is Lauren Lardson, L-O-R-E-N, and I also go to Sentinel and am part of the Missoula Robotics Team. And I'd also like to thank for you guys helping pay the coach stipends every year, which helps them do what they do.
I am Reese Felde, R-H-Y-S-V-E-L-D-E. I am another representative for the robotics team, and I would like to thank you for the material and equipment that you have provided.
David Hamilton, robotics coach for the district. Want to get some names and some faces in front of you for kids. Thanks for the, for the pieces that you do. I want to say that the budget is $40,000 of the things that the kids mentioned that we could put hard pieces to. The district has paid $11,000 of that $40,000. Thank you. Kids have raised another $11,000 through their donations from family, friends, and working at craft fairs and concessions. Businesses in town have contributed $3,000 at this point, a couple thousand-dollar donations by Neptune and ATG, where KVIY has donated Northern Rockies Orthopedics and Stockman Bank and Honey Kiriyaki. And we will be hitting more businesses, saying, please help us. It's expensive proposition to do a robotics team. Thank you for the district for giving great seed money to get started.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming and letting us know how you're doing. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
I'm Michelle Knuckleby. I'm an elementary school librarian at Hawthorne, and my colleagues are here with me to advocate for libraries tonight. I have a handout somewhere. Our jobs have changed tremendously since I began teaching a long time ago. We, of course, still deal mainly in text and books and research skills, but those skills have changed so much. We're also heavy into teaching the digital citizenship and digital safety and technical skills all fall to the librarians and the elementary skills at the elementary level. We teach coding and to keyboarding. We do a lot of collaboration with teachers. I'm lucky in my building, my principal encourages my teachers to do at least one integrated project a semester with me, so that's, I'm really fortunate to have that kind of support. For example, right now, we're working with the Missoula Writers Collaborative in the fourth grade and GeoData place here in town. And somebody's handsome husband that is an artist is working with us too, so it's a big community event that we're, we're doing with our kids. And we're, we're right in front, we're the one, we're the workhorses, but I think sometimes we're very invisible. People think we're sitting there drinking coffee and reading magazines or something. We also do a lot of outreach, like parent nights, evening book fairs, special programming like Children's Choice or Battle of the Books, home reading incentives like be a library ninja, where you can earn your black belt by depending on how much you read. We do a lot of that sort of thing. What else do we do? Most of us manage the school websites. We, most of us manage all the school's equipment. I have four Chrome carts, three sets of iPads, two sets of iPods, plus the lab that I manage. And a lot of these things that I mention, in any other organization, there might even be a full-time person for that alone. And so this is on top of a teaching load. We, we do this. We're often the first line of defense, help with the teachers and students for technical issues, usually audiovisual, but also one-to-one, just-in-time training. And we usually manage all the data in our building, like for our courseware, data management of just, just the passwords this fall was kind of an ordeal, and that was right in our lap. So, so we're busy people, and I could not do any of these things without the support that I get from the main office. We have a, some wonderful people down in the ad building that have our backs and do the work that frankly, I don't think I could go back to doing it, to lots of running reports and analytics and cataloging, not to mention just putting jackets on books and sticking the spine labels on, which is something that really I, I don't have to spend time with. Thank heavens. Some people were a little upset about the underpants on the front of my, my report. I just want to say, you know, that like underpants, they're only for trusted adults. If you're a child, you don't give your password to anybody but a trusted adult, and, and they need to be private, and, and you need to change them occasionally. And yeah, so I, I didn't want to upset anyone. Yeah, and if you wanted to visit our website, this is actually an interactive newsletter. If you go to the website, all of these, you know, the, they'll, you can click and play the little movies and so forth that the kids have made. So that's, it's fun. And now I need to introduce you to my middle school colleague. This is Becky.
Hi, my name is Becky Krantz, K-R-A-N-T-Z, and I'm one of the librarians here in the district. I've been at multiple schools, and I'm representing the middle schools today, although I am also going to talk about the high schools. I'm currently a librarian at Big Sky High School, so we were just the three people who were available to come here on Tuesday at 6:00 PM. So as far as some of the things our middle schools are doing right now, they are participating in the Battle of the Books competition for the third year in a row. And this is the second year that the middle school librarians have chosen to use Pacific Northwest Young Readers' Choice books. So they actually selected books that are on a list that's representative of our area, and they chose to write the questions themselves. So this involves writing hundreds of questions over, you know, 15 or 20 books so that they have enough questions for the kids to practice with, and then also enough questions to host a competition, which will be coming up in the next couple of months. Our district office supports Battle of the Books by designing and distributing colored posters that are displayed in the school, and they are fantastic. The event has increased student interest in reading, and a record number of students are participating this year, and I expect that that will continue to rise, so congratulations to them. Washington Middle School is preparing for a new space, and despite the fact that they're kind of split in half right now, if you've been over to see them, they're continuing to teach research skills, digital citizenship, and promote reading in their space. At Big Sky, we recently restarted our social media accounts at Big Sky Library to better promote our program and materials. In November, we went out into the hallways and we did pop-up library, so we had a couple of carts of books, we had a little tablet and a barcode scanner, and we checked out books to kids in unexpected places. So we were just barely outside the library, which kids found really hilarious. And then we went down by the lunchroom, we went by the coffee cart, we went all over for about two weeks. We're also promoting overdrive checkout of eBooks and audiobooks online and distributing codes for the free open eBooks app. This Monday, we had a make-it-take-it program in the library, and we had 13 students hammering, knitting, crocheting, making buttons, magnets, and more, many of them as gifts for their families. And tomorrow, I'm working with a world geography teacher to help students write and record parody songs about the French Revolution. And you really haven't lived until you've heard a parody song about the French Revolution. Hellgate has told us they are preparing their library for the big move, and they're working on collection management, inventory finalizing details for the night hall, which is going to be their new lecture hall off the library. They're excited to move to a centralized location to enhance accessibility to books, media, and technology, and they hope that the new space will promote civility and openness for students, staff, and community.
Hello. My name is Kim Rot, and I am one of the librarians at Sentinel High School. I'm going to follow up with a little more high school library news. At Sentinel this year, we've collaborated, or we will by the end of the year have collaborated with every English teacher to give a lesson to students about fake news and how to find reliable source, sources that have good, good reliability behind them. We're also organizing an author visit with Ben Mickelson. He wrote Touching Spirit Bear that many students read, and another book called Rescuing Josh McGuire that many of the students read. He's going to speak at Sentinel twice, once to all our special ed students, because we have a big population of those students who don't often have programs directed to them, and once to our freshman class, and his topic will be preventing bullying and motivating students to work hard while they're, while they're in school. You may be wondering what, to what honor you owe this multi-level library report, and the answer is this. For 27 years, Diane Anderson has served as MCPS's catalog and systems specialist, and she's going to be retiring on December 31st. Over those 27 years, one of her passions has been standing in front of this board and advocating for the importance of libraries. She believes, as we do, that libraries are the beating heart of every school. So we asked her, Diane, could we come to the board and talk about your career in order to honor you? And she said, oh, please don't. What would really honor me is if you would come to the board and carry on the tradition of talking about the importance of libraries. And so that's what we did tonight, is to tell us how libraries are so important. But we'd be remiss if we didn't say, Diane, thank you for the 27 years of service to the children of Missoula County. Thanks in part to your efforts. MCPS libraries from grade school through high school are doing really cool stuff. We really are the beating heart of the schools in Missoula County, and we appreciate all Diane's, Diane's, Diane's efforts toward that. Diane Anderson, catalog and systems specialist, as if you couldn't tell. When I first started in libraries, actually, and then I was a librarian and that years ago in 1976, and unfortunately, at that time, it was the shush, shush, check out two books, check them in. You know, kids had to sit at separate tables, you know, to do their work and that. And it's so empowering to me to go into the classrooms, which your libraries are, and see what is happening here now and all the innovative practices. I work with people that play nicely, they collaborate, they share information, they're doing a lot of things that are very innovative. It's the pop-up library, I got to watch that, that was pretty amazing to watch that. It's really hard for me to leave my work family. That's probably where the greatest angst is, but I think that we're in a very good place as far as the support we have at the central processing. We certainly have highly qualified individuals in our libraries, and our kids and our staff, parents in the community, and that really benefit from the work that they do, and I really appreciate my time with you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Excuse me. Then we'll move on to agenda item number six, which is an item that we see usually at least once a month, which is a community connection, which is providing information about activities that impact our schools that are taking place in the community. And so Superintendent Thane, I don't know if you want to introduce Sarah, or? I'm happy to introduce her since she's a friend of mine, but since...
Well, if you would like to, that would be fine.
No, go ahead.
You know, tonight, we do have the honor of having Sarah Cofield here from the Missoula City-County Health Department. Sarah, of course, is really on our radar in the late summer, early fall, as has become somewhat the norm. We've been impacted heavily with wildfire smoke in the last several years. And the City-County Health Department not only operates the monitoring stations and provides us with current data, but they've also been great in terms of the consultation that they provide and the recommendations that have come forth, because of course, their primary concern is the health and well-being of our students and the public we serve. So we appreciate their efforts. We have, of course, continued to evolve in terms of our understanding of how to work with these issues, and for the first time this fall, we actually had some of our schools where we actually had enhanced air purification, some HEPA filters, et cetera, as a result of, again, an awareness level, but also an understanding of our need to work to improve indoor air quality when we're so heavily impacted. So again, we appreciate Sarah coming to provide us with an overview, and we would like to welcome you to the podium.
Turn that on. So as you guys, I think, are aware, this was a pretty bad wildfire season. I think anyone who lived through it in terms of survival, like we made it to the other end. I had several calls from parents who were very concerned about the wildfire smoke this year, and they asked that I talk to you guys, so I'm super glad that I was able to get on your agenda and share with you some reminders of what we went through. And the purpose of this is that we don't grow complacent, and we don't forget or expect it not to come back and happen again. With wildfire smoke, with the climate that we live in, we need to be proactive and understand that it's going to come back and it's going to happen again, and our best route is going to be preparation. So whether it's any scrambling and no one has to sit down and breathe air that's really bad for them. So that's a satellite photo from the summer, just shortly after a lightning storm went through and lit off about 50 extra wildfires in our region, which was kind of exciting. Happily, only a few of them impacted us, but it was a bad wildfire season. I got it. This is, just to bring you back, this is the Lolo Peak Fire. Right after it got really big, this photo was taken by a woman in my office who takes amazing photos and sent me beautiful smoke photos throughout the wildfire season, just to bring you back to this place, since we're enjoying such nice cold air. Let's get back into what wildfires were like. We were surrounded by wildfires. These are the ones that affected us the most. The Lolo Peak Fire was the primary offender for the Missoula area. The Liberty and the Rice Ridge Fires hammered Sealy Lake. Sealy Lake had incredibly thick smoke for six weeks. It was levels that we've never seen before, that no one has ever seen before, and that we hope will never see again. But there wasn't a good direction for the wind to blow. We just had smoke and fires in every direction, and this was before that extra bout of fires got started that I had in that first picture. So it's just kind of set the scene. So why do we care about wildfire smoke? The issue is, obviously, it's health-related. The fine particulate matter in smoke is super, super tiny. It's less than one micron in diameter. When we're talking about air quality and fine particulate pollution, we're talking about the two and a half microns in diameter, and everything's smaller than that. And wildfire smoke particulate falls into that, and smaller. So when we're talking about filtration to clean out wildfire smoke, just because, I mean, filters two and a half microns in diameter, that's not sufficient. It has to filter out to less than a micron in diameter. The particulate is so tiny, you breathe it in, and it bypasses all of your natural defenses. It just goes straight into your bloodstream, and it can start up an inflammatory response that affects your heart, your lungs. The more we study particulate pollution, the worse it gets. We're seeing it neurological effects, kidney effects, and this year, people were complaining about their joints swelling up when they're out in the smoke. It's an inflammatory response that affects your whole body. And it worries you down. I think all of us were feeling pretty crummy by the end of this. So first thing you notice will be watery eyes, irritated respiratory tract, and headaches. Now, with some people, that's where it ends. But you also see reduced lung function. You see aggravation of COPD, which is your chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. Those are your chronic bronchitis, emphysema. You see worsening and increasing asthma attacks, worsening severity of asthma symptoms. And asthma, your bronchial is already inflamed and has mucus in it, and when you irritate it even further, the inflammation gets worse, and during asthma attack, the muscles around your bronchial squeeze and stand behind this teeny tiny hole to pull air through. And you are irritating that system by putting a particulate in the air, you're just making it worse. I have a graphic that I didn't put down here for time's sake that illustrates that really nicely. You see pneumonia complications. We know that there was, there was at least one woman hospitalized with pneumonia complications just this wildfire season from the smoke. We had increased hospital visits, we actually have data on that this year from increased hospital visits during this wildfire smoke season. You have increased risk of heart attack and stroke, and you also have increased nonaccidental mortality. So people can succumb to particulate pollution, which is bad. So we monitor particulate pollution year-round in Missoula County. We have three permanent monitors, one in Frenchtown, one in Missoula, and one in Sealy Lake. Those are the stars on that map. This year, we were extremely fortunate, sort of, by being ground zero for wildfires, this for the first part of August, which meant that the feds came in and the state came in, and they brought all of their monitors with them. And we got a bevy of extra monitors just sprinkled around the county, which was great. I had eyes everywhere, which was fantastic. My initial plan this wildfire season was to drive around and look at the smoke. Usually, there's one fire, so you drive to the fire and you look at the smoke. And this year, that was not an option. There were fires everywhere that they've taken all day. So we were able to get monitors all around, which was fantastic, and then it gives us data like this. There we go. So this is the monitoring data for all of those sites that we have. That little dotted line, that is the National Ambient Air Quality Standard for Fine Particulate Pollution. You don't want to ever go above that line. That line is 35 micrograms per cubic meter, averaged over a 24-hour average, so it's measuring the mass of particulate in the air. As you can see, we were lucky when we were below that line. It was a really rough year. Sealy Lake is that really worse-than-everything line. They frequently exceeded our ability to measure the particulate. Our monitor didn't go up that high. It tops out at 1,000 micrograms per cubic meter, and we had 20 different hours on nine different days where we just couldn't measure it, because it was worse than anything we could measure. Our machine wasn't prepared for it. The blue line is Florence. They got hit really hard with the Lolo Peak Fire. And then Missoula is a dark red line. It's kind of weird to think about, but compared to Sealy Lake, it looks like it's not that bad, but it was, you were here. Missoula was really bad. So why am I here, and why are we talking about this? Couple of important dates. Athletic practices started way back in the beginning of August. That's when soccer practices started. And then classes started in the last week of August. So you can see that smoke was here during athletic event season was kicking off, including some games, and then it was still here when classes were starting. And this isn't an isolated incident. It wasn't just 2017, we suddenly had smoke here when, when there was school in session. This has happened year after year after year. Every year that we have a major wildfire season, we have smoke after athletic practices start and while classes in session. Wildfire season itself has been extending. That's part of climate change. We're seeing wildfire season extending into the fall months. And the worst was in 2012, we had smoke into October. That was horrible. But it can happen again. There was no reason to think it's not going to happen again. It's going to keep happening. As we have a warmer, drier, hotter climate, we have more conditions that are set up for wildfires, and we just have to wait for it to snow to put out the fires. This year, we got really lucky, and it snowed the middle of September, which was not supposed to happen. We went to Sealy Lake the first week of August and said, you guys are going to have snow, have some smoke until October, because it's going to be here until it snows. And it snowed in September, and that was fantastic, but it was not normal. So there's going to be smoke while schools in session. Not every year. You can tell there's a lot of years we did not have wildfire smoke, but when smoke is here, the odds are really good it's going to be here when school is in session, and we care about that because it's inside the buildings. We had a monitor this year that Climate Smart Missoula had running inside the Hellgate High School Gymnasium, and they had it running for the first couple of weeks of September, and that's the blue line. The blue line is the particulate matter inside the Hellgate High School gym. And this is, I think, an important thing to understand, is particulate matter... And this is, I think, an important thing to understand, is particulate matter comes inside buildings. It follows any little leaky spot that you have, it makes its way in. And when we help people, we put out guidance about activity levels and say, "You'll go inside." The idea is there should be cleaner air inside, or you should be reducing your activity levels when you're inside. But if you were to go inside Hellgate High School on November 7th and have PE like normal, you would be breathing extremely unhealthy air. And if you're exerting yourself, you're exposing yourself to pretty significant risk of health consequences. So, we understood this. Like, we know that the smoke comes inside buildings. There's been more and more people looking at this and seeing it, which is why, as Superintendent Thane alluded to, we were able to get air purifiers put up in Sealy Lake, in the elementary school, in the Lolo Elementary School grades, Woodman Elementary School, and the Sealy Swan Elementary School. But that was through the Health Department purchasing filters and Climaxport Missoula purchasing filters. We obviously couldn't do all the schools in the county, so we focused on the places we're seeing hazardous air quality. But even here in Missoula, there was clearly terrible air inside the schools. There we go. This is to remind you of what that looks like, so it's not just a bar and a graph. This was that the seventh, which is the second big peak on there. That's smoke going up to the top of Sleeping Woman Peak. That's about 8,000 feet thick smoke trapped inside the Missoula Valley. It's just pure smoke from valley bottom to the peak of the mountain. That's what it looked like from overhead. Really, really thick smoke, just to bring you back to the horrible summer. And it was inside our buildings. And it wasn't, obviously, just inside the schools. It was inside our houses. It was inside everywhere that did not have awesome filtration already set up. So, what did it mean to people who were here living through it? Based on syndromic surveillance, the Department of Public Health and Human Services did, for people going into the emergency departments with cardiac and respiratory symptoms that correspond with smoke exposure, there's a 2.3x increase in the number of people going in this year compared to last year, the same time period. We nearly had wildfire smoke last year. That big peak is September 4th, which was when Missoula had its worst day. Unsurprisingly, we also saw the big peak of people going into the emergency department with symptoms that correspond with smoke exposure. So, we do know that people were seriously affected by the smoke this year. Resources for schools, what can you do about this? Which is one thing, keep yourself informed. There is real-time particulate data available with health category information online at today's air website that the state maintains. There is health advisories that I put out, so you can get your extremely long, wordy updates about wildfire smoke, what it's doing, where it's going to go, how to protect yourselves, what to expect. And then we also have outdoor activity guidelines that are put out by the state that I did help put these together. And there's a category, when it gets to the purple, the category in there says, "Move indoors, practices and games indoors, but only have them if the air is safe." And what we meant by that was if the air is filtered. It's not, you can't just go inside and expect the air to be clean. And that is something that I think we're really trying to hammer this year, is the indoors is not a safe refuge. It's just the idea if you're inside, you're going to be lowering your activity level, which lowers your breathing rates, which lowers your heart rate, and will lower your exposure amount, but the air's not clean unless you actively clean it. So, where do we go from here? Installing better filtration in the new schools. MERV 13, it's a just terminology for the filtration efficiency that goes into a central air system. We have so far had the opportunity to talk to the schools that are being built. They're coming through the Health Department for review, and there's been a lot of enthusiasm, and people already ahead of us on the game of saying, "Yeah, we're going to install a MERV 13 filtration system that can actually take out some of that fine particulate." But then, what do we do with the existing schools and the fact that there is smoke? It's going to come back, and it's going to come inside the buildings. But there is some proactive steps being taken with the new schools that are under construction right now, so that's great. So, in summary, this was the worst wildfire season on record for smoke in Missoula County, both in the intensity of the smoke and the duration of the smoke exposure. We know the smoke is coming inside, and that it's going to keep coming inside, and we can just expect there to be years in the future where we see smoke during school season, during athletic practices, and also when classes are in session. So, I wanted to come and share with you, and I'm happy to answer questions. I know you guys are on a schedule, and trying to take up all of your time, but always feel free to ask me questions, or I'm kind of a nerd for this stuff.
Any questions for Sarah? Trustee Newbold?
I just wanted to say that your updates online were great. They were so detailed and so helpful, so thank you. And then, my question is, was there any monitoring done on the schools that had air purifiers placed in them this fire season?
We unfortunately did not have the equipment to do that. We'd have loved to. We did get a dust track monitor into a house. We got a filter too in Sealy Lake. We also sent purifiers up to clinic patients in Sealy Lake. But unfortunately, that one was unplugged by the person who was babysitting it, so we don't have that data. Amy Sillenberg with Climaxport Missoula was running a dust track in her own house, and she had a filter, so I'm hoping to get her data off of that machine to see how her filtration held up compared to other worst day in Missoula, which was September 4th, which will be the closest approximation we can have to what happened in Sealy Lake. I do know, based on what people have told me, that the elementary school in Sealy Lake had the cleanest air in town. And like, before they were in there, there was a visible haze inside the classrooms. But once they were up and running, it was clean. So, it was better.
Any other questions? Steve Breckstad, and then Trustee Beers.
Yeah, I had a question about the filters. Do you know how much they cost roughly?
It really depends on what you're doing. The central air, your MERVs, I don't really know a whole lot about that particular system, other than that I learned the numerical rating. Hospitals have, I think, a 16 or a 19. Because the higher rating you have, the better filtration you're going to get. But a standalone room filter, such as the ones that we purchased to put out in schools, those all retail for about $180. We got them from the manufacturer for close to $130. The one I bought for myself for my bedroom was about $80 or $90 bucks. So, it really varies, and it's going to depend on how much space that particular unit can clean and how fancy it is. But the cheaper ones tend to clean a smaller amount of square footage, so you really need to make sure it's appropriately sized for the space that it's in. We put two per classroom, because they're each rated for 350 square feet. The classrooms reach about 900 square feet, so it can quite cover all 900 square feet. But when they're running for several, several hours, they still manage to circulate through all the air in the room.
Yeah, and I remember when I was little, because of asthma being kept home when the smoke was too bad, and I just wanted to know, like, was there more of that this year? Or do we know that at all, even anecdotally, and like, what the policy is as far as absences?
Well, I can't speak too much to that. I did speak to a woman who took her children to the emergency room with asthma and was writing letters to the school about keeping her kids inside and not having them go outside and run around for recess. The Health Department does not recommend closing schools or keeping people home because, oh, unless you're able to stay home with filtered air. I mean, if that's the cleanest air you can have, then heck yeah, stay in the clean air. But like a blanket-wide statement, a lot of homes aren't going to be any cleaner than the schools, and the kids may be more likely to be running around than if they're in classrooms. And the more you run around, the more you expose yourself to the smoke. And we firmly are committed to, they believe the school should be a very safe place for kids to be, which is part of why I'm here, and part of why we're really advocating for making schools safe places where kids can be during wildfire smoke and getting clean air.
In response to Trustee Beers, on page 39 in the packet, we have a matrix that's similar to the one Sarah showed in her presentation. It's a district-adapted version, excuse me, that probably requires some updating. Normally, when conditions are good or moderate, we don't have modifications. But once we get unhealthy for sensitive groups, we try to limit exposure for kids. Certainly, those with asthma would be kept indoors, but we include in that recommendation at that point in time, shortening outdoor recesses and practices, et cetera. When it gets into the unhealthy category, not only outdoors, but also indoors, children are to limit their activity. At that point, all athletic practices, if they're going to be held, are moved indoors, and we may need to have some conversation about how we proceed with that. And we cancel any outdoor PE, et cetera. I can't tell you specifics with regard to attendance this fall, but actually, our attendance was really good. I can speak to Sealy, and I know Julie and I took a trip up to Sealy. The school site was evacuated, and they spent a couple of weeks at an alternate location, and we had nearly 100% attendance, even with the fact that a number of those students were actually evacuated from their residence, but they still managed to come to school.
Any other question?
I can help answer. We have 559 students in the district who have a health alert for asthma. So, there's more than that, but oftentimes, when kids get older, they outgrow some of those. They don't have a health alert anymore attached to them in our student record system, but we have 559 students with health alerts for asthma.
Thanks, Sarah, for that update. Are there any best management practices that we can be doing? I'm assuming that when the smoke gets really bad and it's getting into the buildings, if there's short of having filters, or maybe making sure that the filters are working to their best, keeping the smoke out would be something. But is there some kind of best management practice, like limiting windows and doors, shutting down certain types of air movement things? Granted, in the summer is probably the worst time to want to do that, but...
Yeah, this is a bit of a moving target. We really haven't ever focused very much on indoor air quality, because I'm an outdoor air quality person, but the outdoors is coming inside, so I'm getting more involved. Those haven't been developed or endowed at all yet. Clearly, it's best to try to keep the bad air out as much as you can and not open it up when the smoke is there and bring it in. But when you're balancing that against the fact that there's heat stress and there might not be air conditioning, it becomes a challenging question that I don't have the answer to. This is a northern climate that is accustomed to be able to open windows and cool off that way, and unfortunately, that's allowing unhealthy air to come in. So, it's going to be something that we all struggle with and need to work on. And I want to come up with that. I want to make that something that we can put together of a way to try to protect kids. But one of the biggest things is reducing activity levels. That does help, because heavier you're breathing, the more smoke you're bringing in. It's just a dose-response thing. But then not opening up the windows when it's really smoky, which we actually ran into someone in Sealy Lake telling us, "No, it's okay, because we opened it up at night, let the cool air." And like, that's when it's smokiest. Like, that was the worst air you could possibly dump into that building was at night. So, it's a challenge.
And actually, you just led into my next question, follow-up. I was going to ask, are there certain times of the day where it kind of cycles through, and if there is windows of opportunity? For instance, you were talking about like the athletic activities and stuff. If they shifted them to the early in the morning, would that be any better?
It really varies on where you are and which fires are affecting you. So, in Sealy Lake, in the late afternoons, they had some great windows of opportunity because the smoke would lift, because their smoke is all locally produced. It would drain down at night, fill up the valley, and then lift late in the afternoon. But in Missoula, and typically in Missoula, and this year and some other years, we see the smoke come in, in the afternoon. So, it's not like a blanket statement. It's going to be really dependent on which fires are affecting you and how that smoke is moving when it does get you as to when your hours of opportunity might be.
So, managing it would be quite...
It would be on the fly.
Moving target.
It's a moving target.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I have just one kind of more of a comment than a question. As I'll echo what Trustee Newbold said, Sarah wrote twice-a-day reports during that peak of the fires, where you could look at 10, I think, and at 6. And she had, not only were they incredibly detailed and gave great advice, but they were really written humorous. I mean, we were all pretty kind of down by the weather, but it was incredibly valuable resource to have. And so, in one of her reports, she was indicating that it was really important, you know, I hadn't thought about the smoke coming into the house. And so, I never thought that you'd be sending your kiddo off to college in Missoula, and the first present you buy them when they move into their house off-campus is a HEPA filter. But I did that based on the advice I was reading about. And my son said, because he suffered from asthma as a child, he said he would have almost not been able to go to school for some of the first days of college, except for the fact that he was one of the houses. So, he actually became an advocate with his friends to get them to think about spending that $100 to $180, and it really made a huge difference. So, thank you for doing that.
Thanks, Marissa. All right, thank you. Thanks for having me. I know, I know. Absolutely, thanks.
So, now, we move on to student trustee reports. So, we have Marina and Mackenzie, and so I know Mackenzie needs to get going, so if you want to go first.
So, my name is Mackenzie Morrison, and I'm the student trustee for Big Sky High School. And so, at Big Sky right now, the Health Science Academy is doing a fundraiser to raise money to buy iPods for the Village Healthcare Center to help some of their patients. And all 10th graders are visiting the Healthcare Memory Center to kind of see where that money is going. And at the end of November, Big Sky had great success at MUN, and so they're very successful. And a few weeks ago, National Honor Society went caroling for selling toilet paper to raise money to buy kids' Christmas gifts that they wouldn't ordinarily be able to afford. And the Natural Resources Class took a field trip to fish hatchery near Arlie. The Big Sky Drama Department put on their annual cabaret show, and it was very successful, and they were able to raise quite a bit of money. December 15th, which is this Friday, ARI has a reading at Big Sky. And as of now, 12 choir students are going to All Northwest in Portland. Speech and Debate has had one of the most successful meets in five years, and they also have one of the largest participation rates in over five years. And tomorrow, Wednesday the 13th, is Senior Night for Wrestling. This weekend is the All City Meet, and for Big Sky, they have the most participants they've ever had in 10 years. And the Big Sky Girls Basketball has a game in Butte tonight, and the boys are at home, which will be getting underway soon. And next week, there's a Crosstown game against Hellgate. And as for other activities, Big Sky is putting on their first dance for all grades in over five years, and it's called the Holiday Ball, and it will take place this Saturday, December 16th. And next week will be the Holiday Spirit Week, where there'll be holiday assemblies, hallway activities, and different themes for the days.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Temperatures are dropping, yet many activities are just warming up. Which sports have started in the past few weeks? Swimming competed in the Kalispell Meet at the end of November, with the girls team taking first. The team has also swam last weekend, and will compete this weekend at the Missoula City Meet. So, be sure to come out and cheer on all of our swimmers. Basketball went to Billings last week, and both boys and girls played Billings West in senior. The girls won both of their games, and the boys beat West but fell in a close game to senior. Wrestling has started with competitions in Poulsen and Butte. They are dueling against Helena Capital tonight at home. Speech and Debate went to Helena to compete in two separate tournaments at the beginning of December. The debate team competed in the Carroll College Tournament of Champions. This tournament is a closed tab, so results were not revealed. However, the speech team competed in the Dusty Rhodes Invitational at Capitol High, where we took fourth place overall. This past weekend, the team headed to the Kalispell Regionals for one more tournament before the break. The team brought home a third-place finish. On the debate side, Chrissy Hartman and Joyce Liu placed fifth in public forum. Cole Sauter placed fifth in Lincoln Douglas. Hannah Gregory placed fourth in novice LD. Matty Braun placed third, and Chris Malcomson placed first place in legislative debate. For speech, Julie Quackenbush placed fifth in informative speaking. Cade Hedall placed third in original oratory. Stephen Clement took second in dramatic interpretation. On January 12th and 13th, Speech and Debate will be competing in the Missoula City Meet. They are still looking for judges, and would encourage anyone interested to come out and judge either speech or debate events. Our academic challenge team was the champions of the Frenchtown Tournament. We are very proud of Oliver Chin, Anna Vinescent, Dakota Thomas, Zach Taner, Noah George, and their coach. their coach, Mr. Pereira. Sentinel's MUN competed last month. Our members had a difficult time turning in their position papers due to technical issues, but after review, we had several members win awards. Zoe Beck, Stuart Christiansen, and Zach Taner won position paper awards. Zoe Beck, Maddie Braun, Nash Sauter, Ethan Saylor, and Zach Taner won committee awards. The members of Sentinel's cyber patriot teams competed this weekend. They compete by using different operating systems to secure images, as well as ensure that hackers can't get through, and also get points for how many flaws were found and corrected. The students at Sentinel always strive for excellence, whether it be on the court, in the classroom, or at a competition. The holiday spirit is strong in the halls of Sentinel. Our student government will be putting on a winter spirit dress-up week starting up next Monday, with each day being holiday socks, PJs, and holiday hats. The annual DECA ugly sweater contest is always something students look forward to, as the top three winners will be awarded cash prizes. Many clubs have charitably contributed to the Sentinel Holiday Fund, which goes to help Sentinel families in need during the holiday season. So far, our NHS members, Sentinel DECA, the Sentinel Steamer, CART Parents, and the girls' basketball team, Anonymous Santa's Helpers, and our track program have all contributed to this fund. Likewise, in the spirit of giving, the student government has concluded a successful canned food drive, and the Spartan ambassadors helped their freshmen homerooms decorate their classroom doors. The winter holiday concerts are beginning. The band is playing tomorrow at 7:00 PM in the Margaret Johnson Theater. The orchestra is performing on Tuesday, the 19th, and the choir will be singing on Wednesday, the 20th. Lastly, all three will be showcasing their talent at the Holiday Concert Assembly on Thursday, December 21st, at 9:30 AM in the Sentinel Main Gym. So we would love for you all to come out and show your support for our musicians. These last couple of months have really flown by. All of Sentinel is looking forward to what the new year will bring, so thank you and have a happy holiday season.
It's Julie. Are you ready?
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay, here you go.
All right. So last month, I was not able to do my report, so I'm going to add a little bit into this month's report from November. So in student council in November, they put on a blood drive on November 13th and had great turnout with the community and students at the high school. This month, they're working on putting on a dance this January, so they're getting that ready. Last month, Leo's Club put on a turkey drive for Thanksgiving, and they earned over $1,000 and received several turkeys. This month, Leo's Club worked with Sioux Lake Elementary students on doing Christmas crafts on their Friday off. And then this Saturday, Leo's Club members will be going down to the Sioux Lake Fire Hall to help out with activities and face painting with young kids, too. And then the Drama Club is performing some Christmas gifts on Thursday before Christmas break. And we also have tomorrow a debate by the senior English class that will be about fires, which is well timed, and it's tomorrow at 10:15. And then there is a winter concert tonight at 7 o'clock, so coming right up here. And then outside of school, we have sports. So in November, the volleyball girls took second in districts and also got to play in the regional. Football team ended their season with a 2-6. The cross-country runners all went to state, and so that's about it for November. And then in December this month, we have Sioux Lake Swan High School's first Nordic Ski Club team. So they are waiting for this note to fly, and they're doing a bunch of conditioning right now. We have the girls' basketball is 2-2. The boys' basketball is 2-1, and they play at home on Thursday. And then we also had, two of us students from Sioux Lake Swan High School competed in the state air rifle championship. We had, one of us took first and the other took seventh, and our team also took first, and will continue to regionals in Utah in the spring. And that's all.
Thanks for being here or being available.
Of course. Thank you.
And now, we move on to announcements from Superintendent Thane.
Thank you. It's always hard to follow the students. They do such a nice job with their presentations, so thank you. I do want to add one comment. Marina mentioned that swim season had started, and some of you may have seen in the media that Hellgate student Catherine Burkhoff swam last week at Junior Nationals, which is a huge meet. It's the largest meet essentially for those students that are 18 and under in the country. And she set a pool record and was the first Montanan ever to win first place at a Junior Nationals meet. She won the 100 backstroke. She swam it in 51 seconds, a few odd hundreds on there. What I think is interesting to put it in perspective is her father was a four-time Olympic gold medalist in the backstroke, and Catherine's time was actually better than he ever swam as a 16-year-old. So congratulations to Catherine. So on to the regular report. As has been mentioned, we'll start winter break next Friday. The last day of class is Thursday, the 21st. Students will return to school on Tuesday, January 2nd. This will be the only regularly scheduled board meeting for the month of December. Our next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, January 9th. And that evening, we're encouraging trustees to report just a little early if they would. We would like to update website photos, so Life Touch will be here to snap photos of trustees immediately before the meeting. So I know Michael will put his best tie on, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. I would also like to mention that Heidi Kendall has been selected as one of 16 individuals from across the state who will work with the Office of Public Instruction on the Suicide Prevention and Response Negotiated Rulemaking Committee. So Heidi is the only trustee from across the state. They work to identify parents, students, staff members, trustees, and administrators to round out that committee. So Heidi will begin her work shortly. They actually have a meeting, I think, to orient next week. As was referenced in student trustee reports, 'tis the season. There are 62 holiday concerts scheduled in the month of December, most of them occurring in, of course, these two weeks. So if you're interested in any of those events, they're all listed on the calendar section of the MCPS website. This Thursday, candidate filing for the May school board election actually opens, so incumbents or challengers may begin that process Thursday, December 14th. The filing deadline is March 29th at 5:00 PM. And I had made note here to recognize tonight Diane Anderson. I certainly can't do justice to recognizing her after what we saw earlier, but Diane's been a regular attendee at board meetings, not only in her capacity as catalog system specialists, but also her work with the Memory Project. And we've appreciated her public comment and her contributions to the district for a number of years. And I had the pleasure of being her immediate supervisor for a period of time and got to know what transpires in the Central Library Office, and I think tonight was a great testament to the work they do down there. It used to be that Diane managed an in-house catalog. We had our own server. She managed the migration to the state catalog system and does a lot of work with our original cataloging of new materials that come in. The three individuals in the Central Library do a great job providing background support so that the library media specialists in the buildings can assume a greater instructional role. So we appreciate Diane's continued service, and we'll get a lot of work out of her in the next two weeks, I'm sure. But we wish her nothing but the best as she transitions to retirement. So thank you, Diane. And that concludes my report.
Then we move on to 7C, which are any announcements from any trustee? Trustee Smith?
I'd just like to echo Mark's comments about Diane, and I really appreciate the fact that you make it to all these meetings. And I don't think the coincidence is lost on me that Mark just noted that, A, you will be retiring in a couple of weeks, and B, trustee, you can volunteer to be a trustee in your free time. You're going to be looking for something to do.
You did mention that earlier.
Yes. Thank you for all your hard work, Diane. Appreciate it.
Diane, I love you, girl. Going to miss you. Come back and see us.
Love the work. Also, I love, yeah, when I get to do my meetings with Mark coming down and visiting. Also, yeah, I would like to extend a challenge, given that it's going to be trustee picture I would like the same photographer that calls you stupid names, Rob. I don't know if it's the same guy as when I was a kid, but he always called you Smush Face and Hamburger Mouth, so hopefully you get that guy. Also, yeah, I am going to be going to the Eagles Nest to pick out my outfit. I'm not sure what the operating hours are right now, but it's the thrift store in the Big Sky High School, run by the vocal prep program. And typically, I know like 1 to 3 are operating hours, but it is a great place, and there are some really good deals if any of the other trustees want to join me in picking out an outfit.
So it says items of interest trustees. Last week, when we, or last time when we talked about Jeanette Rankin and naming a school, people said, well, we know Emma Dickinson's named after a woman, and we thought probably Willard. So I looked it up, and as far as I can tell, Willard is named after Frances Willard, who actually founded the Women's Christian Temperance Union. And that fascinates me, because my grandmother was a member. I still have her card. And so I want, I'm going to look further into this and see if, there used to be a school on that site. I don't know if it was named Willard, or if the new one, when the current building was built, if it was changed at that time, and whether it was controversial or not, if people liked having a building named after that woman. So I think it's exciting information. Any other trustee announcements? Well, then we'll keep moving on to the actual business at hand, then. So 8A1 is an elementary action item. Julie, it looks like there's the acronym alphabet soup of the MCPS FRCs and FITs, which I'm sure you will explain what those really stand for, and it looks like it's a great cause.
I will explain, but you know, I was a library media specialist and got to work with Diane, both at the district library and when she was at Big Sky High School. And well, plus, we go back to fire seasons, making sandwiches out at Imperial Meats, too. So we've been working together a long time. And Michael, every day but Thursday, 11 to 2:45, Eagles Nest. Because that's what librarians do. They research that information. Okay, so FIT and FRC, family and transition liaisons at each non-Titel 1 school, and family resource center specialists at each Title 1 school. So these are our people on the ground in the buildings who help identify families who need support due to homelessness, who are experiencing homelessness, either, usually temporary homelessness. And in the past, we were able to fund a reading program and a book for every student program through the RIF National Program through Scholastic, which was Reading is Fundamental. We lost funding for that at the national level in 2012. Recently, with our family resource center and FIT coordinators, we've done a book study, a book called Rich Brain, Poor Brain, written by Linda Cargus-Bone. And we got to hear her last year, I got to hear her last year at the state Title 1 Conference. And in her book, she talks about the value of early literacy. And we all know how important it is, but research shows that just that gap in vocabulary acquisition is huge for students who don't have access to quality literature. So our FIT and FRC folks devised a plan to reach out and find grant money to be able to purchase books, high-quality books, through Scholastic at a greatly reduced price, to be able to give kids, not only kids at our schools, but also their younger siblings potentially. So there's good literature in the home. So this $5,000 would go towards purchasing two books for every student who's identified as homeless, which is about 5% of our student population. And we would design activities around that connection with books and kids, including families. That's one of our goals, is to engage families in increasing literacy and access to good literature. So that's what this grant would be used for.
Thanks. Are there any questions, Julie, before I entertain a motion from an elementary trustee? Trustee Smith?
More of just a curiosity, but when we lost the RIF funding and we're going for this, is this anywhere near what we were getting or anywhere near what we want to get?
No.
This is just the tip of the iceberg, so?
This is the tip of the iceberg, and it says no matching funds. I mean, this is going through Trish Kirsten, who's our, she oversees our neglected and delinquent Title 1 set-aside McKinney-Vento grant, and so that, these are the kids we're targeting who are identified through that grant.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion to allow the FRCs and FIT centers to submit the grant to Town Pump for the purposes that Julie just described, moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee McDonald? Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
I mean, I just think this is the tip of the iceberg, but a really important tip. And I want to take the opportunity to make sure that everybody is aware of, and maybe people out there watching, too, the Imagination Library Program that exists in our county thanks to the efforts of the United Way. Dolly Parton started the Imagination Library Program, and it is a program that provides free-of-charge, without means testing, a high-quality children's book every month of a child's life, from birth through age 5. And it is a program that distributes thousands upon thousands of books around the country. You can sign up for it for free. Our local United Way handles the cost of shipping those books to people in our region, also in Mineral County. And it's addressing exactly the really important word gap and literacy gap that you're describing, Julie. So total support for this.
Any other board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the grant application that's been submitted, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present, and trustee Newbold had to leave to attend her son's Christmas concert, so that's why she left a little bit early. So now we move on to B1, under Finance, Operations, and Maintenance. It is to approve Budget Amendment Resolution 2018-7E, an elementary action item. As you'll recall, we took a look at this at the November 14th regular board meeting, and then there were some additional steps that had to be followed before it could come back for final, final approval. Is that correct, Pat? So if you want to walk us through the final steps we're at?
You bet. Thank you. And so this is the next step, and it is the final resolution approving the budget amendment. We last published the proclamation on December 3rd and posted it in all of our buildings. And we also submitted a petition on behalf of the trustees requesting the budget amendment. We received a response from OPI. If you look at the response, they approved the budget amendment in the amount of $134,763.84 in state aid. That's our request is state aid. The resolution references $134,764. So I'd recommend a modification to the resolution to make those numbers, those dollar requests reflect $134,763, which is a rounding down to the amount that's been approved. So with that change to the resolution, it's ready for your consideration.
Any questions, Pat? Any questions, Pat? Trustee Smith?
I'll donate the 16 cents if we want to round it up, Pat.
Any other questions? Not sure that was a question.
Or donations.
Or donations. And seeing no other questions, is there a motion to approve the attached Budget Amendment Resolution 2018-7E with that modification that Pat just identified in the amount of And elementary only. I thought I had said that. So is there a motion? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of the motion to approve the attached Budget Amendment Resolution as modified, please indicate by raising your hand. That's unanimous as to elementary trustees present. Then we move on to B2, which is to award the bids for asbestos abatement at Russell Elementary. As you'll recall, we had given authorization to put out a request for bids, and it looks like there were two responders, Burley. Is there anything more to note other than one is significantly lower than the other?
Yeah, there is a significant difference, and the low falls right within budget of what we were expecting, so, and how they're going to perform the project. We see no reason not to award that price. It's a good price, and it's an accurate number.
Any questions for Burley? Seeing none. Is there a motion from an elementary trustee to award the contract, or I guess the contract for asbestos abatement at Russell Elementary to, is it Schroder or Schrader?
It is Schroder.
To Schroder Contracting. Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there, seconded by trustee Decker? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of awarding the bid to Schroder Contracting for Russell Elementary, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to elementary trustees present. Then we move on to the parallel agenda item, which is to award the bid for asbestos abatement at Washington Middle School. And ironically, it appears that it's the same two vendors, but the numbers are different this time. Is anything else to add?
No, it worked out well, didn't it? So I have nothing else to add.
Any questions for Burley? Trustee Smith?
This might be a question for Pat, I guess, but don't we, do we usually do board approvals for smaller contracts like this? I thought there was a limit that we'd...
There is. We probably didn't need to go through the process.
Okay.
Yeah. $80,000 is the purchase bid limit.
That's what I thought. Okay. But, so this, I mean, we can...
Oh, yeah. Of course.
I just wanted to make sure we brought it back as well, just because we came to permission to put it out for bid as well, so, just so we had that follow-up communication.
Any chance to talk to you, Burley? I look forward to it.
Likewise.
Any other questions for Burley? Okay. Is there a motion by an elementary trustee to award the contract to Safe Tech for the asbestos abatement project at Washington Middle School? Moved by trustee Lorenzen and seconded by trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion other than the earlier comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. All elementary trustees in favor of, it says aware, of awarding Safe Tech with the asbestos abatement project at Washington Middle School, please indicate by raising your hand. And it is unanimous as to elementary trustees present. Then we move on to four, which is to grant permission to solicit requests for qualifications for a general contractor and a construction manager at Hawthorne Elementary. And this is an elementary action item. This is something that we've been seeing now since the passage of the bond on a regular basis. And so is there anything specifically to note about this request, to be able to put out the request for qualifications, Burley?
Yeah, what all that is, we had our first EIT meeting last week with Hawthorne, and it went very well. And we're really trying to get a little more aggressive on getting our general contractors on board a lot earlier than we did in the past. Not that we weren't doing it in the proper time format before, but I think with the way the construction world is right now and the timing we need for permitting and long lead items, getting those kind of things ordered, we felt like we need to get those out and done now to get them on the team really early. So it's a little earlier than normal, but I think it's going to work out for the better.
Any questions for Burley? Trustee Lorenzen?
This is about the team. Is this the same team that did the Architect, or is this team already formed on the general contractor?
No, this is permission to go out to, for RFQ for the general contractor.
Right. But I mean, as far as trustees on the committee, is the committee already formed, or can I get on it?
I don't see, we've typically kept the same teams, but I don't think there's any reason why we wouldn't be able to add a team member to the selection of the general contractor, unless Pat or Superintendent Thane believe otherwise. Yeah.
Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to grant permission to issue a request for qualifications for the GCCM services associated with what's going to happen at Hawthorne Elementary School? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of granting permission to issue the request, of the motion to grant permission to issue the request for qualifications for the GCCM at Hawthorne, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. We move on to number five, which is the same topic, except we're switching to Lewis and Clark Elementary. I'm assuming you'd want to say, make the same remarks, that it's good to get ahead of the curve a little bit on this one as well?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay. Okay. And so is, is there any questions for Burley? Then is there a motion to grant permission to issue the request for qualifications for GCCM services associated with what's going to happen at Lewis and Clark School? Moved by trustee Decker and seconded by trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of the motion to grant permission to issue the request for qualifications for the GCCM services in connection with Lewis and Clark, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to C1, which is to approve the personnel report. And so it's on, beginning on page 46. We see this on a routine basis. Is there anything of note in this particular report?
No, it's actually a rather small personnel report.
Any questions, Dave? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the items on the personnel report? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? We don't discuss particular individuals on the report, but if you had any general board comments? Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of approving the items on the personnel report that's attached to the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Yeah, I know, it's the first thing tonight. And then we move on to C2, which is board business. And so I just wanted to remind everyone, and I'll speak with trustee Decker individually about it since he's new to the board, but we had prepared a measure of evaluation that we had used the past two years to evaluate, to perform the superintendent evaluation that we're required to do by law. And so we're going with, unless there's any strenuous objection, we'll continue using that tool. It seemed to be working pretty effectively. So I think Lenora or Mark's office will be sending out the form. And so what has, well, the timeline is such that Mark's evaluation has to be done by the end of January. And so what the proposal would be, if you think, despite the holidays and other activities going on, if it goes out to you in the next week or so, the evaluation tool, if you can be working on it, and so when we meet for the first regular meeting in January, that second Tuesday of the month, we would move into executive session to just, to do the evaluation. And then, of course, we come out into public or regular session in case there's any decisions about changing terms of the contract. The one point that comes up regularly is whether or not to extend the contract by one year. That's typically the one issue that is raised, because by state law, we only can set it for three years, but we have the ability to set it an extra year because that's three years. So that would be the one item. I understand that there wouldn't be any other requests for any other terms. So if you're comfortable thinking we can get that done at that meeting, I don't think it'll be a really busy meeting, then we'll have the evaluation done early. If for some reason we need to continue it, we can continue it to the second meeting of the month. I won't be at that meeting because I'm having surgery the week before, so that's why we're trying to see if we can be effectively, be efficient in doing it the first meeting in January. And so I think with most people having seen the tool in the past, it's really numeric evaluation, which I tabulate, and then any written comments, they all go to Mark's or Superintendent Thane. So if there's any pieces of information you want to provide to him, and so that's also really helpful. So we will anticipate that we will, I will be collecting those documents at that meeting. But if for some chance you need a little extra time, as I indicated, we need to have the evaluations in by the end of January. So just looking around the table, does that work in terms of a process for everybody? You know, knowing that you've got families and other things going on for the holidays? I'm seeing lots of nods, so that's what we'll anticipate to do. So this isn't really an action item. It was more information that I wanted to get out to everyone. So you'll be looking for that evaluation tool to be coming to you, and then if you can print it out or even fill it out electronically and just get it back to me whenever it's completed. Is that okay? Okay. And then, public comment again on non-agenda items? We provide public comment at the beginning and end of every meeting, so come on up.
Diane Anderson, Catalog and System Specialist. I'm pleased to report we had a student from Willard that asked, "How did Willard get named?" And just trying to reflect back, I think, on what the research was in that it's, my understanding, I believe, that Southside School was the original building, but I've been through the board minutes. I think it's maybe 1911. We're thankful we have vaults that contain a lot of archived materials. And so I've got them marked. If you want to come and read them, you won't have to peruse them and that and keep looking for information, and I'll continue to see if I can find something there. But they're not very detailed minutes, so it may be a bit of a challenge. But we also have PTA scrapbooks from a lot of those, probably not back that far, and we haven't looked at the student journals. There may be something there as well. And I'm also pleased to report in that that Lennar Jacobs and I have, we've toured our archival vaults and that, so she's very familiar where these materials are and that, so you're going to be in very good hands.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Then I'll explain that because there's the possibility that there might be questions that come up concerning a non-agenda item, I'll declare that the individual's right to privacy outweighs the public's right to know, so we'll move into executive session for a very brief matter. So we'll have to have everyone else clear the room. Thanks, Marina. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Thank you. So we'll just take a two-minute break if anyone needs to get some water.